Welcome to the May 18th meeting of Murfreesboro City Council. If you'll bow with me, I'll lead us in prayer and then we'll do our pledge of allegiance. Father, we praise you tonight for this chance that we get to together. Lord, in this season of new beginnings, we thank you for all the many kids in our community that are graduating. Lord, they're closing a chapter in their life and they're beginning a new chapter. We pray that you give them guidance, that you give them wisdom. Lord, that you allow them to be able to take a breath and, Lord, celebrate what they've been able to accomplish. I thank you for the teachers that have been able to help them get to this point, for their mentoring, for the love that they've shown them, and for the investment that they've poured in to these kids. I pray that that investment is multiplied by many fold to be able to help them succeed in the next chapter in their life. Lord, be with us and bless us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Hope all is well with you. Well, this evening, I'm charged with providing the recipient for the Stars Award for the month of April. As you recall, the Stars Award is to recognize those employees who go above and beyond their normal job duties in providing outstanding customer service to both our internal and external customers. Well, tonight's recipient is a young lady who provided excellent customer service to a visitor at the Wilderness Station. Tonight's recipient is Ms. Kaylee Rindell. She is a recreation program instructor at the Wilderness Station in the Parks and Recreation Department. Kaylee's been with us since October, a little bit over seven months. Even though she's been with us just a short time, she conducts herself like she's a seasoned veteran, and you'll see why here in a few minutes. Below is a summary of a letter received by a Girl Scout leader who sent to us when she was visiting or scheduling a visit with the Wilderness Station, and her experience was very awesome. Here's what she said. "I recently emailed Kaylee and asked about the animal encounter program at the Wilderness Station. I wanted to make sure that a group of six Daisy Scouts wouldn't need reservations. Kaylee was very helpful in her responses. She didn't stop with just, 'You don't need reservations.' She went on to explain that the program had a short agenda and let me know that we could book a personalized program if we preferred it. For my purposes, this worked out great because I only needed a short presentation." She added, "A helpful information and provided additional services that are also offered." She continued helping me as we chatted back and forth about the availability of tables and pavilions near the Wilderness Station. She was extremely patient and very nice. Then, when I met her at the event, I was more impressed. She continued her great customer service by presenting two interesting animals. She was very patient with all the children present. She didn't get phased by all the talking, the walking, the playing throughout the day. It was obvious that Kaylee had a knowledge about the Wilderness Station. Later, after the presentation, while the girls were working on their badge project, she stopped by with one of the owls as she was moving back inside of the building. She taught us some very interesting things again, and she was very extremely patient with all the questions that were being asked. Kaylee represented the city of Murfreesboro very well, and she should be considered a star. Well, Mayor, Council, Kaylee is a star. She's that employee that we train, and we hope they will do the necessary things we hope for when she's dealing with a customer, with a high degree of courtesy and respect. She's an employee who will provide a warm smile and be patient when things around her is very busy. So, Ms. Kaylee, if you would stand. Please stand on behalf of the Mayor, the Council, and the great city of Murfreesboro. It is my pleasure and honor to recognize you as the Stars Award winner for the month of April. Mayor?
Thank you.
All right. Good stuff. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have 10 items on your agenda.
Motion.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to old business. You have ordinance 23020, fiscal year 23 budget amendment. This is second and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, ordinance 2317, setting the fiscal year 24 water and sewer rate. Second and final reading. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have resolution 23R12, support and acknowledgement of the amended Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. McKnight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I stand before you tonight to ask for you to consider a resolution of support and acknowledgement of the amended Chapter 4 of the Murfreesboro Comprehensive Plan. If I could revisit our steps up into this point. There were outreach meetings were held with various stakeholders, including development community, city departments, planning commissioners, and city council members, and valuable input was received during all those meetings. In addition, the Planning Commission held two public hearings on the updates, one in 2022, one in 2023, as well as a joint workshop with city council earlier this year. After the second public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to adopt the amendments to the plan. The amended plan more accurately communicates to the public the city's future vision for development and land use, and will give Planning Commission and city council dependable guide for future land use decisions. The amendment will also emphasize the importance of economic development by identifying targeted areas for economic development, as well as creating new land use characters specifically geared toward these opportunities. I'm available for any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions? Okay, we need to hold a public hearing for this amendment to our 2035 plan. If you're wishing to come and speak at the podium, we'll open the public hearing. You'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. If you'll keep all comments and questions directed to the city council, we'll get those questions answered at the end of the public hearing. Please state your name and address when you do come up. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, the public hearing is open. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we will close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading. You need this on first reading, correct?
It's a resolution, only one reading.
We need to consider resolution 23R12 as support and acknowledgement for the 2035 amendment.
Motion second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to resolution 23R10. This is a budget amendment number eight for summer and con administration grants for schools. Director Duke?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am presenting a resolution for you to consider for approval to recognize new revenues awarded to the city schools. On May 9th, our school board approved the budget amendments to recognize new state funding in the amount of $2,013,658, which will be used for our summer school learning program during the month of June. The grant will cover all the salaries for teachers, assistants, administrators, nurses, crossing guards, bus drivers, as well as curriculum materials. The board also approved an increase in the revenues of $5,563 in our federal consolidated administrative funds, and this will be used for supplies and materials. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
How many students signed up for summer school?
We have over 1,000. I think today was 1,063 that have signed up.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that. I was gonna ask, out of the number that signed up, how many third graders?
Four hundred and eighty-one third graders as of today.
And we haven't received the test results yet, right?
We will receive test results on Friday, the first round, and we have had several meetings with parents alerting them of the new state law, and we have communication plans going out every day next week to make sure every child has a pathway to promotion in line with the new state law.
Yeah, I was interested. I think I heard in Nashville on the news, I think, oh, my mind has gone blank, but there was a lot of third graders that signed up for summer school.
Yes, we're pleased with the numbers. We're expecting more will sign up once test scores are back at the end of the week.
Okay, no other questions or comments, I move for approval.
Motion second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to resolution. Thanks, Director Duke. We'll move to resolution 23R19, fee schedule adjustment, solid waste.
Mayor, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to come before you tonight and present this resolution. This is a resolution to adjust the solid waste fees. We did review this at the May 10th workshop, but a quick refresher. The item, the bars shown in blue here are the expected annual expenses between FY24 through FY35. To cover those existing expenses, we are looking at a $16 per month to cover that existing expense and debt. Around FY25, '26, you can see there is some additional costs that are going to be incurred due to new debt and the disposal costs that we have to process our waste. That's gonna add about $7.5 per month per customer, so you're looking at a total residential customer fee. If you want to recover 100% of the cost at $2,350, that's if you want the solid waste department to work more like a utility and charge a user fee. What we are proposing for FY24 is $9.5 per month. That covers about 6.7 million of the $10.5 million expenses, or about 64% of the expenses incurred are projected in FY24. So, the recommendation from staff is that we increase the solid waste residential fee by $2 per month for residential from $750 to $950, and we increase the monthly solid waste commercial fee by $5 per month from $30 to $35, excluding the city core overlay, which would stay at the $30 per month fee. That does represent an approximate $1.44 million revenue increase to the general fund to help cover those solid waste expenses. So, I'm available for questions if you have any.
And this is the best we could do, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't expect you to say anything other than that.
We talked about this at the workshop, and, you know, I can't remember the year, but we used to give a certain amount of water for free if you didn't meet the minimum.
Correct.
And it was a painful process going through to take that water out, so if you use the service, you pay for it. And, you know, with what we've been working on really the last 10 years on solid waste, it's one of those things that I know as a council, we consistently say, "The only thing that we can guarantee besides death and taxes is solid waste is gonna be more expensive moving forward than it is right now." And so, it's a tough fee, but when you look at how much it costs us to pay for trucks now, how much that we've given in employee increases in solid waste over the last, really, five to seven years because we can't find CDL drivers, the cost to maintain the equipment now, it is the most efficient service for the least amount of money that any resident is paying right now. So, and with what we are moving forward and proposing, it's one of those fees that I think hopefully we can be able to minimize.
Right. And the brush and limb pickup services too have really stepped up over the last couple of years. Not, I mean, getting that brush and limb picked up once, twice a month is a pretty nice service.
And I would say $2 a month, you know, $24 a year for this service in relation to what inflation is right now, in my opinion, this is a much better way to handle this service than raising property taxes. Because what a lot of people don't realize is when we raise property taxes, it hits commercial businesses who do not get this service.
Right.
They don't pay for this service. And that's something that is a much fairer way to be, more fair way to handle it.
Darren, I think on the previous slide, it showed we were covering 60%.
Just around 64% is projected recovery at the $9.5 per month.
So, in theory, it could have been more.
Yes, the $16 is to get the 100% recovery. If you wanted to charge a user fee today and basically make the solid waste and enterprise fund that was zero reliance on the general fund, we would need to be at that $16 per month. And I will say this, when I review these numbers, there's a lot of employees and folks that don't live in the city and don't receive basically the fee for service at this level. They're out in the county. When they see even the $23 number, they're like, "That's better than what I'm getting right now for solid waste service in the county," or for private, I should say, for private hall pickup. You can obviously take your own garbage to the convenience centers at the county if you so choose.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Cor.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cor, I know we make fun of your PowerPoints, but the information that you give us is absolutely phenomenal in helping make these decisions. All right, we'll move to land use matters, item 16, plan of services, annexation, and zoning for property along Manson Pike. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the Murfreesboro City Council. The next item on your agenda tonight is a request for zone, or request for annexation and a plan of services for a property located at the intersection of Interstate 840 and Manson Pike. The total property area of the parcel is 8.23 acres. Included in this request is a 130-foot segment of Manson Pike right-of-way that brings the total to 8.63 acres. The Rutherford County Road Board voted to consent to the annexation of the Manson Pike right-of-way on March 6th, 2023. See if I can get to the map. There we go. The subject property is located within the city of Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary and is contiguous with the city of Murfreesboro city limits along the northwestern property line. It's currently developed as a single-family residence. Staff has reached out to other city departments and outside agencies as a part of this area study, and all indicate that they are able to provide necessary services to this property. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the plan of services, annexation, and zoning request. Staff requests the city council conduct a public hearing for any public input on this annexation and plan of services and take a vote on first reading. Representatives for the applicant are in attendance tonight, and I'm also available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for the plan of services and the annexation, and this is to show that we can legally annex the property and that we can provide the services to be able to annex it. Anyone wishing to speak for the plan of services and annexation, please stand at the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading resolution 23RPS16 for the plan of services.
I have a question for Mr. Barbie. For this particular, I don't know if anybody's here, how many students are gonna go into that building? And I'm thinking about the traffic on that road over there on Manson Pike. Let's see, is Mr. Taylor and Mr. Harriman? It's K through 8. It's a two-story, 56,000 square foot. So, what are they looking for in terms of enrollment? 200, 300, 500?
It's about 770 students is what's projected there, and we have already completed a traffic study. We have shared that, and it's been reviewed by our transportation department. We'll be installing a left-turn lane coming from the 840 side, and then we'll be installing right-turn lanes coming from city proper side. And then, on site, we have nearly 150 queuing spaces to take care of those rush times at pickup, at that pickup time in the afternoons.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on the plan of services?
Motion.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We now will move to resolution 23RA16 for the annexation.
Yes, sir, Mayor McFarland, this is the...
Hold on one second. Brad, we've already done, we just need to get, we need to get, it's okay, we need to get a motion for the annexation first. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Now, we'll discuss the zoning of the 8.23 acres. Brad?
This is the companion zoning request for this previously mentioned property. The surrounding area around the subject property consists of a mixture of zoning. The land to the east is outside of the city limits and is developed with an institutional use. It's currently the Blackman United Methodist Church. The land to the south is on commercial fringe, residential, single-family, and planned residential district. The property to the northwest is Interstate 840. The request before you tonight is to zone the subject property to planned institutional development for the construction of a kindergarten through eighth-grade school simultaneous with annexation. Staff requests that city council conduct a public hearing on this zoning request and take a vote on first reading. Mr. Taylor is again here, and I believe he has some thoughts he'd like to...
Thank you, Brad. I do have a, no, that's not it. Actually, it looks like it may not be loaded. I'll be happy to walk you through without the presentation. So, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Matt Taylor of SCC. I'm accompanied by my client, the applicant on the project, as well as the architect and contractor on the project, Ryan Holmes. We are honored to be here to present to you the Rutherford Collegiate Prep Charter School, I think, if not the first, one of the first in Murfreesboro. As Mr. Barbie said, the site is just over an acre site located kind of at that triangle of Manson Pike and 840. There is an existing home and outbuildings on the property today. All of those will be removed with this project. As Mr. Barbie said, today, the property is owned RM in the county, and it generally drains from Manson Pike toward 840 today, and it'll continue to do that after development as well. We do have a couple of detention ponds planned on the site, one on the western portion, and then one on the northern portion as well. The building is a two-story building, approximately 56,000 square feet in total. That will house K through 8, as Mr. Barbie said, for just under 800 total students on site. We do have one main point of access onto Manson Pike, which will align with the Braxton Park development to the south, and then we have an additional stub to the east into the church property. So, if that property is ever redeveloped or further developed, we'd have a point of connectivity potentially back toward Florence Road eventually. And then, we've also got an emergency access, so if there's some reason there's an accident at our entrance back onto Manson Pike, all those were requested by our transportation staff. We do have one-way circulation to allow for the pickup times. As I mentioned earlier, we've got about 150 spaces planned in that pickup line, so those pickups will be to the east, north, and west of the building itself. We've also got planned for four to five bus parking spaces along the front of the facility as well. We have open playfields to the north of the building, and then we have guest and staff parking located to the south and to the east. Of course, with our design guidelines, all that parking, as well as our detention ponds, will be screened from kind of the public view with shrubbery and additional landscaping. And then, we've also have very well-defined pedestrian access points and connection points between the building and then back out to Manson Pike to promote as much walkability up and down Manson as possible. The building design, we worked very closely with staff to make this compliant with the design guidelines and to develop a unique architecture. We're gonna have very well-defined entryways, so to create a very focal feature as you come in off Manson Pike. It'll be flanked by a few flagpoles there to further redefine where that primary entrance point is. We've broken the building into multiple building planes, multiple colors, and varying roof lines throughout, so it'll be a very unique building for our city. Although no landscape buffers are required, we do have ample landscaping planned around the site to give it an aesthetic treatment, provide those perimeter plantings, and to screen things like the parking and our detention ponds. Again, our access that I mentioned earlier, we have completed that traffic study. It's been reviewed by the transportation department. We have committed to complying with those recommendations, which are turn lanes coming from both directions, as well as we've given a kind of that afternoon pickup, traffic management, on-site traffic management plan inside the pattern book. We'll have approximately four staff members operating that with three lanes wrapped around the building to make that a safe and efficient workflow. And then, we have not requested any exceptions to the zoning ordinance inside this pattern book and this rezoning, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions or my client, either one.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I know you mentioned that the accommodation right now is 760 or 7...
770 is what we anticipate, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I know that the way we are growing, what is the maximum capacity that...
That is the maximum capacity, so it's, I assume, is that governed by the state? So, that would be our maximum capacity. We would not be allowed to go over that.
Matt, a question would be, just looking at, I know you don't have it in front of you, but I'm looking on page 227 of our agenda, and it's the overall plan. It's showing the queuing lanes and things like that.
Yes, sir.
If you look on the left side where that detention is, you've got that kind of loop all the way around. Was there ever any consideration having a secondary exit down there?
We looked at that very hard, and if you've been out there, it ramps up extremely. So, really, it was a grade change. really, it was a grade change.
Okay.
That would not allow that to safely occur.
Okay.
And also, that area to the west, really, of our entrance is considered restricted area by TDOT, or controlled access, I should say, so they actually have fencing through there, and so they would not let us connect into that.
Okay.
Just a thought, there's no pedestrian access on this.
There, we have a sidewalk running from the front of our building back out to Manson Pike, and then Manson has shoulders, portions of it to the east have sidewalk. This section is not curb and gutter and with sidewalk today. It is anticipated, I think, in the future on the city's 2040 plan to come along, and I believe this section will be widened to five lanes, I believe, with curb and gutter, if what memory serves, councilman. And so we have set our site up to receive the sidewalk once it's there.
What's the timing on this?
I think we would like to get started this fall. We've actually went ahead and developed our construction plans, are working through construction budgets. We do have to finalize one offsite sewer easement to the east, which my client is working on currently with the church. I think we would like to get in there and get the building pad before the wet weather sets in, in anticipation of being open in the fall of '24.
I don't want the group to publicly comment on this, but I think a discussion that the council, we don't really talk about private institutions, but I would assume that this group would want to work with Murfreesboro Police Department and have a safety plan in place with our, our police department. I don't want to comment, you make a comment on how your safety plan is, but is that something that these organizations would, this organization would do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, we need schools. I mean, the county hasn't built a school in three years. They were building, what, one every year and a half? So it's a charter school, I'm sure it'll be a good school, and it's going to help relieve overcrowding at a lot of city and county schools, so I'm all in favor of it.
All right, we need to hold a public hearing on this zoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the zoning of eight point two-three acres, please come to the podium, the public hearing is open. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23 Oz fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move to on motion. We have taxiway A in apron pavement rehabilitation construction.
Mayor?
Excuse me.
Item number seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I put a big check mark on seventeen, so, all right, we'll go to the rezoning of property along Winlon Drive. Sorry about that. We have a public hearing for the rezoning of twenty-one point ninety-nine acres.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This second item that we have in our land use items today is a rezoning request for thirteen forty-five Winlon Drive. The property is owned RM twelve, and the request today is from an RM twelve zoning district to a PRD planned residential district for the Murph PRD. The rezoning request is for the proposed conversion project that would increase the density of an existing apartment complex. As said, this is located at thirteen forty-five Winlon Drive, just south of, just south of East Northfield Boulevard, west of Lescasse's Pike, and is approximately twenty-one point nine-nine acres. As you could see from the map, the surrounding land uses are a variety of multifamily land uses, duplex, triplexes, and as well as some mobile homes to the west and single-family homes and duplex to the south. The existing complex today contains two hundred and sixteen existing dwelling units, and with the proposed conversion came with two phases. Phase one was initiated via site plan that was submitted and approved by the Planning Commission for the four-bedroom forbats into one-bed and two-bed, one- and two-bedroom units to maximize the permitted number of units by right of the RM twelve zoning district, which brought it from two hundred and sixteen to two hundred and sixty-four dwelling units. This was all done interior. No renovations were done to exterior or kind of, any kind of exterior building improvement for that. For phase two, today is the rezoning request for that to allow for the further conversion of the site to permit an increase of the total dwelling units from two hundred and sixty-four to three hundred and twelve, a net total increase of ninety-six total dwelling units. Also included with this rezoning request is some enhancements to the site, some improvements to the site. Mr. Roundtree of Huddleson Steel Engineering will discuss those improvements further with you in his presentation. A sanitary sewer allocation variance was approved by City Council for the new ninety-six total units. However, the additional density could not be approved solely by site plan with the Planning Commission and thus necessitated a rezoning request, which is why it is here today. During the April fifth Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission held a public hearing to discuss the application and to formulate a recommendation and voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request. Staff is supportive of the rezoning request, that is, it is consistent with the future land use map and is compatible with the existing land uses that is surrounding that property today. Also, with the reconfiguration, the renovation proposed with this property, it would bring, it would bring some needed reinvestment to the site. And again, Mr. Roundtree from Huddleson Steel Engineering will discuss those, the reinvestment that is proposed to be with this property. After Mr. Roundtree's presentation of the rezoning request and site improvements, City Council should hold a public hearing for any public comments or concern, and then vote on the first reading of this rezoning application. I am available here for any questions during or after the presentation, and Mr. Roundtree will also do his presentation as well.
All right, any questions?
Question, you're going from two hundred and sixteen apartments to three hundred and twelve, correct?
Yes, that was done in two phases.
Okay, in two phases, but you're going from six hundred and ninety-six bedrooms down to six hundred bedrooms.
That's correct. Because, but there, even though there, even though the density is increasing, they're making these bedrooms, they're renovating them.
Exactly.
Yes.
Because the, I guess it's the four-four?
Yeah, four-four.
Going away, and you're going to have more one-ones and such.
That's correct, councilman.
Mr. Roundtree, would you like to present, or would you want us to have our public hearing?
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Clyde Roundtree of Huddleson Steel Engineering. I'm representing Mr. Mark Schoeffel from Eastman Development, who is developer for the property, and also Mr. Michael Pickerlymer is here from the architectural side, if you need explanations on bifurcations. So just on an overview, Mr. Maxwell, you're exactly right. This is kind of, this is my third project, actually getting to do this, where developers are coming in, looking at underperforming apartments primarily related to college housing, and they're, they're turning them over into much more of a broader base of population, worrying more towards young families, children. So it's, it's been a really positive thing so far on the ones we've worked on. We're really excited about having these fellows in town. They have two other projects they've already done in town as far as improving properties, so it is a large in capital investment in Murfreesboro. And as was mentioned, so college housing typically has these four-bedroom rent-by-room kind of scenarios, and most are college housing. And that's a problem, because it creates a dynamic where one person becomes a bad roommate, three people leave, one person's renting four rooms, basically at the price of one, maintenance goes down, the facility goes down, and all of a sudden, these become problem properties. So Eastman Properties coming in, they're taking those four-bedroom units, breaking them down into three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom units, and that provides a much broader mix. So with that in mind, I'll just, I'll go over the site plan just for an overview. As was mentioned, let's see here, so the primary, let me just go to the site plan, so we can just go hit the high points. So as was mentioned, phase one was approved by right, so there's already been a site plan developed for phase one, and allowing that construction to move forward. When it came into phase two, that was the additional forty-eight units that puts our density over what would be allowed in that area, so that's why we're going for a planned residential development. It's only the four-bedroom units that are being bifurcated, so in total, there's ninety-six new units that are being increased over the existing two hundred and sixteen that are previously there prior to the new construction. So the bifurcation also accompanies basically a whole new remodeling on the facility, low flow of toilets, upgrades in all the appliances, upgrades on the countertop. So they're ultimately basically remodeling the whole property. However, the primary focus is within those four-bedroom to three-bedroom and two-bedroom, one-bedroom units, and those are basically on the end caps of the buildings. With that, also, they're coming in and improving the property as a whole. And the improvements they're making that are important to note, that they're taking away a basketball court and making that into a playground, they're enhancing the dog park, adding more character qualities for the animals, they're redoing the whole pool area, enhancing that, enhancing the clubhouse, and they moved from having two tennis courts that were not in really good shape to remodeling the tennis courts and making one a pickleball court. All the amenity upgrades have really been in advance of expecting a new population within the apartment complex. Again, catering more towards families with young children and away from the college student. Obviously, we can't say college students can't live here, because that's not, that's not really the objective, as much as to diversify the amount of people that could live in this location and provide more opportunities. We're excited about working with them, this is an exciting project. The project had been purchased a few years back and had already been kind of remodeled in some ways from an aesthetic standpoint. They're really coming in and really gutting the whole inside and bringing it up to speed. There will be some landscape enhancements as well, make it a pool a little more private, working through some areas where the surrounding kind of buffering landscape's a little thin, they're going to supplement that. The dog park area is kind of wide open, they're going to add some shade trees there. So all in all, it's a refurbishing of a property that was underperforming. Again, an increase of density, but lesser residents at the end of the day. So with that in mind, that's my formal presentation. If you have any questions for myself, Mrs. Pickerlymer, or the owner, we'd be glad to answer them, and we'll follow up on any questions after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree before we open the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing for this rezoning request for twenty-one point ninety-nine acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance twenty-three Oz fifteen.
So moved.
So moved, in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to on motion, taxiway A in apron improvement rehabilitation construction grant. Mr. Gerke?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, we are set to close the airport temporarily on June fifteenth for some major pavement work. We received bids, and council approved that with clear reconstruction around two weeks ago. Now we're receiving the grants associated with this project, and the first one that I'm bringing to you tonight is a one point two million dollar grant, which includes some federal money, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars worth of federal money, and six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars worth of state money. Our local portion, which is coming from an FY nineteen CIP, is around sixty-four thousand dollars to cover our local share. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Mr. Gerke, thank, Mr. Gerke sent an email out to the Airport Commission. I know, Bill, you sure, I'm sure you read every single bit of it.
Every bit of it.
But it talked about the airspace change at Nashville because of the growth of the Nashville airspace, and Nashville airspace looking to go to a Class B airspace, which is for your busiest airports. So it was, it was a really good email, talking about how that's going to affect Murfreesboro.
It's, just to put in perspective, Nashville is the busiest airport in the nation right now as far as growth, and the busiest airspace, just to put that in perspective, as far as growth is concerned, just...
I had someone ask me the other day, when there's storms, you know, around, that now you're really noticing jet traffic from Nashville that's lower and lower coming over Murfreesboro now, so it's, that's definitely picked up. All right, we need to move to our ten-year solid waste plan. Mr. Gore?
Mayor, council, again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you.
We've got a PowerPoint, all right.
I, well, I'm...
Shocking.
Yeah, shocking. It's one slide, it's just some bullets, just to keep me on track, otherwise I get up here and ramble. So this is our ten-year solid waste plan update. We've, we started, the first plan was updated in 2021. It was based on the 2018 Vision Document for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee between the county and the, and the city. So this year, we really just updated the metrics on how much solid waste we're generating, how many carts we're distributing each month, and solid waste pro forma, the rate design you just, just saw in past, the increase. The Greater Nashville Regional Council did create a solid waste strike force, kind of went through some of the challenges, goals, and data portals that have been identified through that work group. TDEC Annual Progress Report, we put some metrics in there, again, showing the expected remaining airspace and expected life of the, of the landfills surrounding our area. Discussed approving, getting the approval for the Private Act Charter Amendment that allows Murfreesboro to create a municipal solid waste authority, and we did discuss the status of our Southern or Butler Drive Materials Management Waste Away Facility, introduced those timelines. So that's kind of just real high-level review of what the tenure update includes, and we would just ask for your approval of the, of the solid waste update.
Any questions for Mr. Gore?
So moved.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Purchase of interchange high-mass lighting?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The proposed purchase is required, is required to replace fixtures that have exceeded their operational efficiency at the Old Fort Parkway interchange. The current configuration consists of, consists of four hundred and eighty-volt, single-phase, high-pressure sodium fixtures that are no longer manufactured. In 2019, TBA through MED provided an LED upgrade analysis for the city's interstate lighting program. Based on TBA's calculations with updated cost, the payback for this purchase is estimated at five point three years while maintaining a ten-year warranty period. State statute and council resolution authorizes cooperative purchases. Purchases of high-mass fixtures is contracted to ONUA to provide the most competitive price for the city's needs. TDOT will be providing upgraded LED lighting on the interchanges of Church Street and Medical Center Parkway with the scheduled ramp improvement projects. Staff is currently working on a Department of Energy grant to fund the majority of the LED upgrade lighting for the remaining interchanges of Highway ninety-nine and Broad and I eight forty. Funding for this purchase totals one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars will come from State Street Aid. I'm available for any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gerke. All right, now, we have a contract for lagoon water treatment residuals removal.
Sir, Mayor, council, again, thank you. Just have a few pictures again to show you how, what this looks like. We have a, residuals that we basically remove the silt from the water that we pull from the lake. We do have a lime softening process, so all of those solids basically go to lagoons. We do have an annual, we have to dredge those lagoons, pull those solids out, so you can kind of see, we pump that into a tanker. The tanker uses a disc injector to incorporate those residuals into soils. They do have some, they don't really have any nutrient value, but they do have a lime content, so it does raise the soil pH, and so that's a benefit for a lot of folks in the agricultural field. So we would recommend, the price has gone up, as is all things, but we would recommend approving the contract with Slurry Systems in the amount of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, funding coming from the Water Resources FY twenty-four operating budget...
uh, funding coming from the Water Resources FY twenty-four operating budget and, uh, reserve, uh, working reserves. So I'm available for quick, any questions if you have them.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. All right, we have one board and a commission appointment. You have the Rutherford County, County Library System Board. Uh, Ms. Lynette Ingram, I thi- served for two full terms, and I think you can only serve for two full terms. So she, her, um, she was expiring in June, so we wanted to go ahead and get someone in place for the budget process, uh, to understand that budget process. So I'm recommending Ms. Vicky Twitty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any licensing?
No, sir.
Any statements?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff?
We will meet, uh, next Thursday, uh, at four o'clock for our budget discussions. Uh, and then we'll have a regular meeting at six after that.
Okay. Um, any other miss- business from staff? Any other business from council? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.